All right, it is eleven ten. So we now have our budget work session on the fiscal year twenty twenty five operating budgets. So Tammy, do you have a presentation first? Do you want to go through the whole thing? And then we'll go category by category?
Yeah, so what we'll do is we'll start by going through a couple of the same slides that we did last week, but very quickly. Just as a refresher, that the three budget priorities for the school district for the superintendent next year are transportation, with a price tag of two million dollar increase, negotiations at an eight million dollar increase, and health insurance for a four million dollar increase for a total of fourteen million dollars. And we'll drill down into the specifics of each of those areas a little bit more as we go through the individual categories. And we're requesting that funding come from, that fourteen million dollar increase come from the county government. We're currently receiving one hundred and twenty seven point three million dollars from them, and we are requesting one hundred and forty one point three million dollars. We're looking at no use of fund balance, either local or from SMCPS fund balance. There is the charter school fund balance, rolling fund balance of five hundred and twelve thousand dollars in there. We're anticipating a decline in state aid of one point one million dollars, from one hundred and forty three point three million dollars to one hundred and forty two point two million dollars. Essentially level funding for federal funds to support the unrestricted fund budget of two point six million dollars, and other funding of two point four million dollars for a total recommended budget of two hundred and eighty nine point one million dollars for an overall increase of eight point five million dollars. And the question is, why are we looking at a decrease in the state revenue? And it's because we do have declining enrollment, we have a decline in the farms applicant, and we have a decrease in the allocation for the transitional supplemental instruction and the blueprint transition grant. And all of that is compounded by the increase in county wealth. And just as a reminder, when we're talking about the state aid monies for next fiscal year, these are SMCPS's preliminary estimates for the revenues. The state MSD is not expected to be releasing their revenue estimates for the LEAs until after the governor's budget has been released on January seventeenth. So we certainly hope that we'll be able to have those numbers early enough that you can incorporate that in your budget before it goes across the street to the county commissioners. And on the expenditure side, there are three, those three priority areas. You, they really glean as the increase, the significant increase area. So under instructional salaries and wages, that is one of our largest increases, certainly directly correlating to the negotiated agreement, four point five million dollar increase there, a two point four million dollar increase under student transportation, and a five point two million dollar increase under fixed charges predominantly associated with the health insurance increase that we're expecting. So bottom line, we're looking at a three percent projected increase in the expenditure budget. So we have in attendance today quite a few folks to assist in answering any questions that you have. They are the developers of every component of this budget. So starting with your administration category, you have your detailed budget binders with all the supplemental details that have been provided by each of the departments. So for the administration department, we, there is a requested increase of one hundred and fifty nine point eight million dollars or three and a half percent. The majority of that increase is indeed for funding for negotiations. But if there are any specific questions regarding that category, we answer those now.
Right, so this is for our binder, this is everything under tab B for the people at the table here.
I don't have anything in this one. Nope.
Yeah, B, B is in voice. There you go. Dorothy, do you have anything?
Are we gonna hire a secretary this year in the works for next year, out of curiosity, for the board?
No.
No, there's no, no, there's no, no, there's no position in this budget.
So there's not gonna be any, okay.
And if you, and if you look, so within tab B, the last, the last page will give you the, the positions. So you'll see that, okay.
Okay. But this is open and recording, right? I just.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yes.
How are the MAB, because I know I went over this with you the last, last year, but the MAB dues, that's cost per student?
It is based on.
And would that be declined up since the norm was down?
No, it's in a band, so the MAB, and forgive me, I, I don't.
No, 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 by your means, go ahead.
So MAB dues are assessed based on a band of enrollment. So up to a certain number of students and, 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 and so there's like a flat fee plus the, what you pay based on the band of, so it's not the specific number, it's not student by student.
Right, it goes, right, it goes by X to X or whatever, so.
It's really small, medium, enlarged, you're a second.
Right, yes.
Okay, okay. So we're doing, um, are we gonna go page by page?
Yes, this is, this is the work session.
Jim, do you have anything on the first page?
The only question is on legal fees. It's five, fifty thousand dollars. Is that just an arbitrary number that based on precedent?
So it doesn't look like it.
He's on page one, and it's account number seventy two eighteen.
That is the budget amount that we've historically maintained for the board. For attorney fees that are district-wide costs versus student-based costs such as special education, general counsel fees are embedded in that category. Certainly you can see for the last couple of years, as a result of the work that our internal counsel has done, we have not had to contract out that service to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So Jim, that's, that's our attorney?
I understand.
Okay, so not, not.
It's not for auditing, you know.
Seventy two one eight is actually for if we have to contract out.
Right, exactly.
So if we have a student appeal that comes to us and we need representation, it's, that, this category pays, this line pays for that.
It's a contingency.
But if you budgeted to actual, right, if you wanted to budget to actual, the, in twenty twenty two, you as the board incurred just under fourteen thousand dollars worth of legal fee cost. You as the board, last year, incurred eight thousand dollars worth of legal cost. We budgeted fifty thousand dollars for this year. I don't know how much we've, we've used to date. I don't believe we've had anything that's, well, we had, I think we had some consulting with a couple of things. But this would be one of those things that ultimately, if you wanted to modify the budget to actual, you could do that. If we have one case that comes before the board, a student appeal, an employee termination, something like that, those costs go up pretty quickly, and we would then have to draw from something else because the administration category is a very small and tight category.
And when attorney's fees are, even the negotiated ones we get are around four hundred and fifty dollars an hour or more?
They're a little more.
Yeah, so.
That's a good, that's a, that's a good point to bring out.
Are there any additional questions within the administration category?
No.
On the, um.
What page are you on, Dorothy?
I'm on page seven. The BOE network refresh, I thought we were finished all the refresh.
So I actually, I asked, I asked Mr. Howard to put together a, a presentation because throughout this entire budget, there is a lot of IT and networking things that, so if you want to do it now, if you don't mind Tammy, and then that way, because throughout this, throughout this whole budget, you'll see increases for IT items, all right? And with the increase in student information that we are now containing and tracking for various things for the blueprint, and then the various cyber attacks that everyone receives, I think it's good just to have his overview because some of his, some of his budget increases are scattered throughout all of these categories.
Okay, so is he coming up?
Or he can just talk from the seat. You just come up on the mic, yes.
There's a couple ways on, on the IT security part. We would like to do that as a communication update to give this, because we really don't want that put out in the public on how we're mitigating a lot of these risks. And on like the networking refresh, I can say that a lot of our equipment that we purchased is getting to be end of life, like ten, eleven years old. So we're going through building by building, and we're working with like safety and security in the schools, like if they have a PA project coming up, because they need the, the newer equipment for, you know, the clocks that are in the rooms now, they require a certain type of connection to the network closet. So that's our approach, and we could give an update, you know, separately, I could even do that as a communication update too on the network type upgrades. And these on request, if we put them in the budget and they get funded, they're also E-rate eligible oftentimes. So we get like sixty percent of that back to help with further upgrades. So that's usually our strategy.
But when we're talking about a BOE network refresh, we're talking about what's in these closets.
Correct.
And that stream all of this information and that allow us to do the work that we're doing. What we, what we would, we'll definitely provide a detailed accounting back to the board so you can see exactly how we're spending money. But we are trying to be as proactive as possible to mitigate against cyber threats so that we have a system that is redundant and resilient. And, you know, again, it's, it's, it's things that you don't see that are behind closets, and the, the one thing that we don't want to find ourselves is on the receiving end of ransomware.
Like Baltimore County did to the tune of millions and millions of dollars.
Well, or the county, when they got hit, what, what was it, two or three years ago before Christmas, right?
Correct, and yeah, there's been some other incidences in the news, Peachy County had a hit, they presented forward. Some of the other equipment that, you know, the access points, they're, when they get end of life, they're not doing updates to combat what people are going after. So, you know, that refresh cycle is a little more than, than the network switches. So when we say the network infrastructure is exactly what Dr. Smith said, the stuff in the closet, the stuff that connects all of our devices and the backend is supported so we can make sure they're only getting onto a sliver of the network, not the entire network.
I just had, I just had, it was such a big increase from like the actual for twenty twenty three, and so that's, oh, yeah. So it's, but it's all BOE related. That's what you're focusing on, okay.
Right, because remember, like, so.
This is for this, this is for this building.
I've got a, so Tammy, you'll probably be able to answer this one for me. So just same page, the seven, seven five oh one. The, in twenty twenty three, it was fifteen thousand. Where, and then it's zero. Is that like depreciation?
No, fifteen thousand dollars was a one-time cost in twenty twenty three, and because we didn't have catalytic equipment in twenty twenty two, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, that's why there's a zero there.
Okay, okay, thank you.
We, we do not just roll forward our budgets. We literally go line by line with the directors and review every budget to ensure that there is an absolute.
Right, yeah, I've seen that in a lot of the categories, and so I thought, get it answered that way. All the other ones are answered.
Anything else on Edmund?
Nope, for me, anyway. How about you?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay. The next category is mid-level administration. There is a requested increase of five hundred and eighty two thousand or a two point eight percent increase, a total amount of twenty one point one million dollars predominantly. The funding increase is associated with negotiations as well. Are there any specific questions in this category?
On, so on the substitutes, on seven one oh, oh, first page, eleven, first page, okay, I'll do. Is that the routine?
Yeah, tell us the page.
No, no one else can see you. Account seven one eighty.
What? There's no cameras. So in twenty twenty three, the budget was, the budgeted amount was sixty thousand, and then, of course, the actual was forty seven. So it's quite a big jump.
I'm sorry, which line?
Seven, seventy one eighty.
Seventy one eighty?
Classroom substitutes.
Substitutes, okay.
So there was a forty seven thousand dollar expense in twenty twenty three. If you recall, in twenty twenty four, we're actually beginning to track expenses at the school level, and that's what this is reflecting as well. We've also increased the rates of pay for substitute teachers in the FY twenty four budget.
That's, that's right, okay, yeah, yeah, that's what it was.
Well, also in twenty two, we didn't really need as many substitutes because we weren't back in a traditional session.
Twenty twenty three, yeah.
Twenty twenty three was a full year and then this year.
Twenty twenty two was.
Twenty twenty two, we, well, we were, I mean, that was the coming back slowly, turning on the lights, back in school. And we didn't, and the thing is, we, we didn't have a lot, we didn't have a lot of subs. We didn't have a lot of sub-expense. We had people in buildings.
Correct, yes, yeah, because everyone actually came back to work, yes.
Everybody actually came back to work.
Okay.
All right, Jim, have anything? Okay, on page thirteen. Oh, you got, you got something? Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Just the reclassification of, of three assistant principals from twelfth month to eleventh month.
Yeah.
That is associated with the freshman academy principles. If you recall, the twelfth month was funded under the S R.
Correct.
That's all the grant funding that's going away, there's.
Right, right, thank you.
Twelve months becomes eleven, revert back.
Okay, page thirteen, I've just, how about I just call them out?
Thirteen, yes, the twenty twenty five budget for line item seven two nine nine. Wasn't the fiber and the copper cabling services, weren't they done in the previous year? Or is this in addition to?
It's addition to.
Contract, in addition to, okay.
Right, I, I, I think what, what IT's plan is, is that we don't, we don't do everything across all of the buildings or place at once, right?
There is a continuous need.
Right, so, so years ago, I think, you know, IT put themselves kind of on like a rotating plan, you know, so A, we aren't strafing the budget in one year with a large volume of expenses. And then number two, it's, there's, there's no way that we could sustain replacing everything at the same time across the entire system.
Plus it would mean that when those things wore out, they'd all have to be replaced at once, so this is just a rolling run.
All right, so page thirteen?
Nope.
Well, there is a big jump on seventy four fifty on the same page for the difference between even what the actual was in twenty twenty three and then what the recommended budget for twenty twenty five. Is everything gone up that much for?
But you have to, so this is the adopted budget.
But we don't have any way to know what the actual is for twenty twenty four yet, so.
So this is what's budgeted for twenty four.
What's the increase percentage usually when you go from year to year?
It, it depends, it depends on the contract, and these are IT items. And certainly we know in, in the industry, the IT costs are significantly increasing.
So, so through the course of twenty twenty four so far, I think Mr. Howard has brought several items forward to us where we have received funding, either, or that we've been able to, to use various sources of funding outside of what the commissioners have provided to us in order to increase and, and do things within this category.
One of those things was the Ring Central was an FY twenty three end-of-year cost that is now absorbed in the FY twenty four budget and in the FY twenty five budget.
So, right, because, yeah, the difference between twenty four and twenty five, it went from five oh six to five seventeen, so that's, right.
I saw the actual on twenty, twenty three, so.
Right.
We also had some increases that the regulatory increases for like phone line usage that we had to pay the federal governments charging us more per line, so that, you know, shows the increase.
Okay, got it, okay, that makes sense.
Not just, you know, the manufacturers of more regulatory, and like E nine one one, those type of increases. So that falls in that bucket.
Okay, okay, thank you.
All right, page fourteen. Anyone?
No.
Page fifteen is the office, the charter school. Page sixteen.
Nope.
Seventeen.
I do have one on seventeen. Um, the first salaries and wages, seven one oh four, is that position filled right now?
Yes.
It is actually got, okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So keep in, so keep in mind.
Because I know some money, some money had moved prior to, and, and what was, got it.
So the, the changes that you're gonna see between the, the twenty four actual, or what, just, just because it's, it's gonna come up again and again, between the twenty four adopted budget and the twenty five is going to be exactly what Tammy has highlighted there, is the funding for negotiations. So on every, basically on every salary line item, so.
Well, I did, well, there was a move of money of like ninety eight one time, so I wanted to see if it was.
We also reconfigured the budget based on who is in a position today versus who was in the position when we budgeted for FY twenty four. So if there was a principal retirement or a supervisor retirement, that person may be significantly less or maybe a little bit more than the current year's budget. So we rewrite that, we reconcile that while we're working on developing the FY twenty five budget as well.
Okay, okay.
I mean, you're looking directly at a salary.
All right, page eighteen. Uh, nineteen. And then we have twenty and twenty one.
Nope.
All right.
So just on, like, on twenty, you do see, so back to Mr. Davis's point, you do see budget to actual in, in seven three twenty six, right? So.
Great illustration, yes.
So here we have, you know, two thousand, three thousand, we've got much more in this year because we assumed there would be, you know, we had a lot of, we had a lot of expenses. We went back and really looked at forecast, what will the expenses be last year? And so you see a recommended budget of forty two forty, or forty two twenty, and it kind of goes through exactly what that is. I mean, so where we keep on hearing people saying, you know, you have to have a zero-based budget and you need to go through, we, we really do. And the supervisors, the directors, the assistant, the chiefs, the assistants, they, everybody is going through line by line and taking a look at what we actually spent in, in each one of these object and sub-object categories last year and what we're spending it on this year to give a pretty, a pretty spot-on estimate of what we anticipate the cost to be in twenty five.
Well, and then if you actually, if you take with the differences between the adopted budget and the recommended budget and look at the notes, everything flips out. So if you add up all of the changes in the notes section, it actually shows exactly what the increase is from one year to the other. It's not completely arbitrary. It is all calculated out, and it has been like this since Tammy got here.
And that is one, I mean, and that is one of the recurring complaints about larger organizations is that a budget rolls over year to year, and they, and some institutions, not us, some institutions just roll over, every year we spent twenty thousand dollars on supplies. So next year, here's twenty thousand dollars on supplies, instead of going back and actually looking to see how much you spent. Conferences and things like this, these are all things that a lot of times, in flush days, and with, people will just roll over a number, and, and we, we don't. And this work starts in August, honestly, August, September, October, where people are going through and taking a look at every single penny. Dr. Hall's after going, yeah, every single flip and penny, Scott. And so that we, you know, realistic, you know, a, a realistic assessment of anticipated costs.
And each of them has a way of meeting my, myself and.
Again, and again, and again, and again, and again.
And again, and the follow-up, we're working on developing this. And to Dr. Smith's point, if you look at the fiscal services budget, you'll actually see one year it's a little bit higher, one year it's a little bit less, because every other year, we have a GASB O P E D valuation that has to be performed. So we don't automatically roll that money forward.
Interesting.
This is why Excel is good and not Google Sheets.
We would never try to budget in Google Sheets, never, never, never. It's gotta be Excel, yes. And don't let Scott have access to the formulas.
No, they should be locked.
It's in a protected Excel spreadsheet.
Thank you for that comment.
All right, page twenty two. And then anything through the rest of administration, page twenty three. Twenty four or twenty five. And then twenty six, you'll see the, the adjustments on the software hardware maintenance, which is all gonna be part of Mr. Howard's communication. And then page twenty seven.
Okay, moving on to the next category, instructional salaries and wages. This is one of those largest categories. It is a hundred and three point one million dollars with a requested increase of four point five million dollars or four point seven percent increase.
All right, any questions through here? Jim, Dorothy, Mary, Kathy?
And this is one of those categories that you can truly see that we're trying to drill down and reflect those costs at a school level. For example, the psychologist used to be reported under student services, but now they're actually being tracked on a percentage basis at the individual schools that they're supporting.
Right, so that's why you'll see psychologist, psychologist eleven month, ESOL. All of that is now rolled back into the individual schools per the credulitarius exercise.
The child.
If you have questions?
So, yes, page. It's not a, uh, not really a page, um, the workforce development. What, what are the categories or job descriptions? Because that money has already, it's kind of already set aside, isn't that that sixty two dollars?
It is, um, sixty two dollars per child, K through twelve, however, they're supporting middle.
K through twelve.
The funding is K through twelve, however, their support is for middle school and high school. So it is, the majority of the funding is under category three for the advisors that are in the schools. However, we do have funding under category five that you'll see later on, and that's the funding that's going directly to the tri-county council or the College of Southern Maryland.
Okay, that's the money that's gonna go to College of Southern Maryland to pay for.
Their, their blueprint coordinator.
Not their blueprint, right, not for the classes.
Don't confuse it with that.
So when you see career advisor, that's the workforce development, right?
What page are you on?
She's on twen, thirty, thirty two.
I see it a lot, I'm on page thirty four, but, um, Fair Lead Academy, but.
That is correct.
Okay.
So for example, on page thirty.
So just career advisors only?
Yeah, yeah, so.
For our part?
Yeah, so when you see on page thirty two that we have, where it says career advisor, four point three, those are our middle school-funded career advisors through that grant, or through that, it's not a grant.
No, it's blueprint funding. It's actually a component of your foundation statute dollar amount, okay? And it's broken out, and they say sixty two dollars, so that absolutely must be spent on workforce development.
Right, so is that gonna be like, like tracked separately? Or is it just gonna get clumped in, everything, and?
It is actually being tracked separately, even though it's embedded on this particular page. We have a separate account number associated with that. So if you wanted to know exactly today how much has been spent on workforce development, I could very easily produce a report from our accounting system.
And so that money will just sit there, like, just say it doesn't get. And so that money will just sit there, like, just say it doesn't get used, everything that's already in there, then it will just be used for longer periods of time? I mean, they might not use it all.
It's, we don't, we don't have a direction on that at this time.
Okay, got it.
Because it's not a grant.
It's not a grant.
Right.
It is a component of foundation funding, but we have a legal responsibility under all the blueprint reporting requirements to report back to the state of Maryland exactly how we're spending all of these buckets of monies.
Right.
And.
Individually.
And why that's important, and why that's important is because that goes away in two more years. So we get the money this year.
Right.
We get the money next year, we get the money the year after that, and then the money goes away.
The workforce development.
The workforce development money goes away.
But does the requirement to offer that go away?
It, at this time, the, my read of that statute is it's all embedded in one.
So it would go away when the money goes away.
Right. Interesting.
That's my interpretation.
Right. Well, we do a lot based on our interpretation. Because in, in the, in the absence of direction.
Exactly.
Concrete and explicit, you must interpret. But yeah, that's where that is.
Can you see me rolling my eyes from here?
No.
Yeah, back there. There's somebody back there laughing. She's, she's, she's seen my look.
Are there any additional questions in this category?
Just give us everything through page forty-three, forty-five, sorry.
But this really, I mean, this, this is in, this is, this strikes right at the target of, of the greatest challenge of the blueprint from the mind-boggling minutia of the accounting elements where all, every single dollar has to be accounted at the school level where we used to be able to just follow general business rules and, and move forward. Now, we have to show every, every single thing fractioned out to, to the absolute school.
Your school has been now set up as their own cost center.
Yes.
Is basically it.
Yep.
Let me, let me boil it down to you.
Yeah.
And, and kudos.
School cost center, Scott.
Yes.
Kudos to Mrs. McCourt and all of her staff who were the first in the state to do this.
Wow.
Um, that says a lot.
Yep.
All right, any other questions in this category?
I think I got one more, but give me a minute. Maybe somebody else might have something.
No.
No.
And this is the big, I mean, this is the biggest, so.
On the psychologist, on the psychologist.
What page?
Um, do they, uh, forty-three, but it's just a general question. Are they at specific schools?
Yes.
Do they trap? Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Cheryl's here.
Okay.
Yes, the school psychologists are assigned to specific schools. They generally have two schools apiece.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they don't, do they have offices in both? Is that kinda how that works?
They do.
So it's two per school, like for elementary?
Yep. It's one, one person for two schools.
Right.
Right, right.
Okay.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so the school psychologist, yep, they do have offices at each of their assigned schools.
Okay.
So we worked with Ms. Lung, and she tells us which psychologists are, and what percentage of their time is dedicated to which schools.
Okay.
We've communicated that back to the HR department, who's working with the payroll department, so that everything's being tracked over to the accounting department.
Whereas we used to be able to say, we have eleven psychologists and they work in schools.
Yes, right.
Right, not anymore.
Now we have to be, this psychologist works thirty-four percent of her time at such and such a hearing. Yep.
So all of the psychologists used to be accounted for in one accounting line, now they're spread across twenty-four lines.
So that's why we need more staff, because we have more stuff to track.
Well, you, you need, you, you need, you need more central office and accounting staff. And yet the blueprint provides no funding whatsoever for central office nor accounting staff. In fact, the blueprint goes out of its way to say that you should be spending all your money at the schools and demonstrating it without necessarily giving us the resources to be able to do so. Good times.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, textbooks and instructional.
Textbooks and instructional supplies category that begins on page sixty-three. There is a request of three million dollars in this category. It's actually a, a decrease of two point seven million dollars or forty.
Sorry, wait, it's page, it's page forty-seven.
Page forty-seven.
I'm so sorry. I skipped ahead. Thank you. Um, this is a requested decrease of two point seven million dollars or forty-seven percent. And that is because in the current fiscal year's budget, there was an allocation of fund balance for textbook adoptions and computer refresh. We're looking, we are hopeful that we can utilize remaining S R funds for the computer refresh. However, there is still an outstanding need for secondary E L L, E L A textbook adoption that is not currently incorporated in this budget. Any specific questions in this category?
Ms. Bailey, you don't have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
One for me.
I'm very happy with those.
Okay, I do have a question on page fifty-one.
Okay.
Seventy-three fifteen. In twenty twenty-three, the actual for the library media was twenty-three five, uh, twenty, thirty-two five? And then it had jumped increasingly much, uh, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five?
Page fifty-one.
Yes.
Page fifty-one, the very last line.
The library media all the way down, last part.
Right.
One, one fifteen.
She just, she just re, misspoke.
Okay.
It was one thirteen to one twenty-three, and then has remained at that bottom.
Oh.
Got it.
Yeah. So ten, it's a, it's flat from this year. It's ten thousand dollars more than it was in twenty-three.
Oh, I was reading the figures. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so what does that include in the library media? I mean, it's probably.
This would be library books.
It would also be subscriptions.
Subscriptions.
Okay.
Um, it would also be digital media licensing content. It would also be, um, maker space materials, because we do that with our kids. That would be.
The cataloging of all of the books.
That would be code, that would be the, the coding in the bots. Um, it's, it's everything to run the twenty-eight media centers that we have across St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Okay, but that's not no, anybody to categorize them. That's just like the barcodes to check them out and stuff like that, right?
That is not a salary cost in that line.
Right.
No, no, that's, this is for stuff.
These are, these are actual materials of instruction.
This would be the operating.
Do you know what the actual is, the, uh, for right now? Boom, twenty twenty-four?
Year-to-date.
For twenty twenty-four, no.
I don't, I don't have that number readily available.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I get that? You know, sometime.
Yes, Mrs. Boff, Boffner just said we will be using every bit of that.
Oh, oh, yeah.
This is managed under her office. Um, actually, in the current fiscal year, these numbers were pulled from the schools and it's actually being managed at the central office.
All right, anything on fifty-two or fifty-three? Okay, uh, fifty-four. Four fifty-five.
I have one on fifty-seven. It's on seven three nine nine is the account number. How many students are screened? Just rough estimate.
Uh, for the gifted and talented?
Yes. Just, just a ballpark.
All, all third graders.
Yeah.
Okay, all, all what?
All third graders.
Okay, all third graders, okay.
That's state law.
Okay, okay. Okay, great. Thank you. Well, the gifted has, uh, um, uh, a separate category on page fifty-nine. Okay, so what you, you said gifted, that was a question, is what you were saying, Lisa?
Wait, where are you? You, you have a different category?
On, on Li, on Li, uh, Lisa? You said that all the third graders on fifty-seven, right?
Yes.
But the gifted is on fifty-nine. Uh, on, uh, number seventy-three ninety-eight.
These are just different account numbers?
Seventy.
Gifted and talented students in general across the board are all tested at grade three. So these are just different account numbers for gifted and.
Oh, okay, got it.
Ones on fifty-seven are also under the gifted and talented.
Is that to help with, um, giving them curriculum differently? You know what I'm saying? Like, maybe they are more advanced and so they will go, you know, like, some classrooms might have three different groups going on at the same time.
Are you talking about for the G and T? Are, are you talking about for G and T in elementary or middle school?
Yes. Yes, for the testing.
Okay, so I, I think, so what the compute, here, on page fifty-seven, there's actually a gifted and talented item, right? So then on fifty-nine.
On fifty-seven is.
Is this a budget question, or is it a gifted and talented specific question?
Um, I think it's more of curriculum.
So let's have Lisa come down to a microphone. So on seven three ninety-nine, materials of instruction, you have eleven.
For gifted and talented, right?
Yeah, yes. You have eleven three, eleven three eighty, and it says math thirty-two hundred, reading sixty-four four ninety-five for the G T program materials.
Correct. So in elementary school primarily, after we do our screening, which is also a line item for testing supplies, which we use the nagle area for third graders, we actually, once kids are identified, we use Singapore mathematics program for third grade, which is what we buy with the math. And then we use, um, uh, junior grade books, um, for, uh, the English language arts. And that's what we buy with those English language arts M O I for gifted and talented.
They're more advanced, working in the same classroom with all the other students.
Correct. And then all schools use different models, Sanders.
Right.
Some, you know, do that within the classroom with the tier-one instruction. Some people have their I R Ts pull out once students are identified, but they use those materials.
So, so page fifty-seven is the actual books and instruction materials. On page fifty-nine is the assessment test that they have to provide.
Correct, the nagle area.
That's, that's the, right, that's the difference between those two categories.
And that's all third graders.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
For both reading and math.
Correct. And then we also have some licenses for any kids moved into our system that were not, uh, assessed in third grade for fourth and fifth grade when they've moved to us.
Okay, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, um.
That's gonna cost money.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm not questioning the cost.
There's some racket setup where, you know, we require all these kids to have tests and the tests cost money. I wonder who is profiting from all of these tests?
Not us.
College Board.
Yep. All right, page sixteen for sixty-one.
In your, uh, video here, you're saying the, the crest decrease is forty-seven percent decrease.
Right.
And, uh, I, I didn't see that in sixty or sixty-one.
So if you look at page sixty, the.
Sixty?
Yes.
Okay.
Component, a, a singular component of that is the computer hardware. You see account number seven three five six decrease from seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars to zero.
Yep, okay.
The other component was associated with the textbook adoptions, and that would have been on a prior page.
Bart, sorry, what page is that?
I'm, I'm looking for it now.
That was all the money, Jim, that we put into.
Page fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
I'm misspeaking?
We went from one eighty, one point eight million dollars in twenty-three to nothing.
Seven three four one.
Page forty-eight.
Got it.
That was the money that we used our fund balance for last year.
For, for textbooks in the current fiscal year. For secondary math. You see that we budgeted one point eight million dollars and it went to zero.
That's the, what we did in October, correct?
That was not, that was actually last year's fund balance that was incorporated in this year's adopted budget.
That's how we thought they projected out.
Government, the new AP government textbooks.
Okay, so we're all clear with textbooks and instructional supplies?
Other instructional costs. The budget request is two point seven million dollars, an overall decrease of two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars or an eight point two percent decrease. We do have a contracted athletic trainer rate increase included. However, there are reductions in the area of assessment contract, repair of materials, contracted talent agency, and instructional equipment.
All right, anything on page sixty-three? Or, I have one comment on sixty-four, and that's it. Just as we continue to support all of our students, the, if you, the categories on this page are primarily in support of all of the all-county band chorus and orchestra. So, um, I know, Mrs. Washington, you enjoy attending all of those with Dr. Smith.
Yes, I do.
We all enjoy attending those. Mary and I just enjoy them perhaps more than everybody else.
You, you could be at a sweaty gym with me and the, and the wrestling team or the.
I would much, I'd much rather be in the comfortable seats at Leonardtown High School enjoying a fantastic choral performance.
So anyway, just, I mean, you know, I just wanna say thank you to continue to support that aspect for our students. So, all right. Anyone else on sixty-four, sixty-five? All right, the next two, sixty-six or sixty-seven?
I got, I got one on sixty-six.
Okay.
Um, on the seven two, uh, psychological services. The seven two nine nine?
Yep.
Was that moved from a different account?
No, these are contracted psychological services. Should we have staffing issues with, uh, filling our full-time positions? We currently have three vacant psychol- psychologists. So our contracted services need to be recognized under the instructional, other instructional cost category.
Okay.
And on sixty-seven, the dual enrollment, I'm assuming that, that the notice that it's moved to the school location is simply that it's, it is attributable to, um, each of the high schools based on how mu- how many students are using the funds.
Yep.
Yes.
Got it.
All right, sixty-eight or sixty-nine? All right. Seventy or seventy-one?
Is, um, let me see, seventy-one. I got one on seventy-one. Uh, seventeen nine nine. Is this for virtual academy? I, I wasn't sure.
This is for performance matters and, um, edgenuity.
So those are our two learning management systems.
Okay, management, okay. I didn't recognize the performance.
It's a software system that allows, um, teachers to drill down to the, specifically to each student, um, test by test to determine which questions they got wrong, which questions they got right, where they need relearning. Um, it's an incredible tool that makes life, um, better for students and better for staff.
And ingenuity is the ability if a student is struggling with coursework, that they either can have supplemental or if they actually are not going to pass a class, they can use that.
Yes.
As recovery.
School G is learning management. Performance matter is our data warehouse. Edgenuity is our online platform for, um, synchron- asynchronous learning.
Um, page seventy-two or seventy-three? Okay, special education.
Special education category, there is a request of twenty-three point nine million dollars, an increase of one million dollars or four point four percent. And that begins on your page seventy-five. Any other questions?
Any questions on seventy-five, seventy-six or seventy-seven? Jim? So nothing through all of special education?
Seventy-nine, page seventy-nine.
Okay.
Seven four three three, travel.
I'm sorry, which page?
Seventy-nine. The seven four three three category, travel employee.
Yes.
What? Why, could I question, why is that so high? Why, could I question why is that so high, or what's going on there?
These are, are.
I mean, is it something that they're going somewhere?
Yeah, those are the, um, state conferences.
This is special education?
That's not me. Uh, special.
Special education.
Special education?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine.
The, um, employee travel.
It must be bus, is it bus?
No.
Oh, no.
No, this is, this is for all the employee, this, these are the expenses related to employee travel.
Oh, this is.
So, it could be, is this also mileage reimbursement and conferences and.
Oh, that's everything clumped together.
That's everything altogether.
Okay.
When we have special ed teachers.
Okay.
Sorry, who are traveling?
Thank you.
Do you have that, Audrey?
I'm done with those.
Yep.
Yep. I apologize. They had an older version.
Oh, sorry, so.
Their page numbers are off of, about, about two pages.
Oh, no, sorry. Seven-four-three-three is probably the easier way to do it.
It's, it says account right here.
It's for employees.
So that, that's probably our mileage. We have several staff members that travel from location to location, school to school. Um, and so they get paid mileage for their travel during the duty.
Because they do not have a system car.
They do not have a system car.
Okay, so they use the, the.
And they service multiple schools, that's what that is.
How many?
How many employees?
How many staff do that?
Um.
Quite a bit.
I'm, yeah.
Okay, that's all right. Since, since you came up, I wanted to give you something else to answer.
It's, then our speech-language pathologists, our supervisors, all of our staff members that are.
There are currently forty-one, forty-two members of special education, and none of them are provided any vehicle. So every time they travel anywhere within the county, we have to pay them the current mileage rate. So this is, that reflects the, 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 the reimbursement that's required for, um, forty employees to travel frequently.
At a rate of point-six-five-five cents per mile.
Fifty-five cents per mile, and a county that is thirty miles long, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions in special education?
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Student Personnel Services, there's a request of one-point-eight million dollars, an increase of one-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand or eleven-point-one percent increase.
All right, this is only four, five pages. Anyone have any questions here?
I do got one question, um, about adding a social worker. That's a new position?
This was reallocated mid-fiscal year, in occurring fiscal year.
Yeah.
From a teacher position.
From it to the social worker?
Yes.
Okay.
This was at Spring Ridge Middle School?
So, is it like social services, or how? What kind of a role do they, I mean?
Yeah, that's, that is a, um, position, excuse me, at Spring Ridge Middle School, that's a licensed social worker, similar to the other social worker positions we have at all the, um, secondary schools, middle and high schools.
And you said Spring Ridge?
Yes.
And they're needed full-time?
They're there full-time.
I mean, and they're needed full-time?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay. Keep in mind, Spring Ridge is one of the blueprint identified schools, so, um, before you leave, put in extra supports for them.
Are there any additional questions on personnel services? So moving on to student health services. That amount is three-point-one million dollars and a requested increase of fifty-nine thousand. Are there any questions in this category?
I do. Um, summer pay.
Page eighty-seven?
That page eighty-seven. Seven-one-eight-nine. The summer pay for nurses, are they working in the?
Per the negotiated agreement, they do come, um, back to work about two days early.
Okay, okay.
Uh, to get the student records up to date.
Okay, that helps, thank you. And answers the other ones for summer pay.
Anything else, page eighty-eight or eighty-nine?
Moving on to student transportation. There is a request before you for twenty-five-point-nine million dollars for this category, or a requested increase of two-point-four million dollars, or a ten-point-three percent increase. This supports funding for negotiations, as well as the hourly contracted driver attendant rate increase, a maintenance fee increase, healthcare trust contribution increase, contracted bus PVA increase, and the contracted bus driver retention. If you recall, the contracted bus driver retention previously resided under the ESAR fund. The request is to move it forward under the unrestricted fund. Are there any questions in transportation? Anyone?
I don't, I don't have anything in transportation.
None?
Good.
All right, operation of plant?
Well, operation of plant, there is a request of twenty-two-point-six million dollars, or an overall decrease of one million dollars or four-point-three percent decrease. Funding is included for negotiations. And I'd like to point out that there are no vehicle, uh, replacements planned and no allocation of fund balance. In the current fiscal year, we had allocated fund balance for classroom furniture and security enhancements. Are there any questions in this category?
I do have a question about the copiers. Is there a, like, you know how when you have a lease, sometimes they'll give you, like, ink, inks included in the leases or anything? Are all the supplies?
Also one included ink stables, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Varner, wouldn't you like to speak more about the, the photocopier lease and, and the management of twenty-eight sites and central office and all of the where they go and how they all, wouldn't?
You know these so well.
It was, it was a fairly detailed RFP process in the fall, or, last year.
Yeah.
Then when you have the parent volunteers that attempt to remove the paper jams and then they break the machine.
Oh, no.
Talk about that.
I mean, you know, again, not to be the old man on the porch in the rocking chair, but boy, I remember the days of Rizzo machines. You just put it in, chakum, chakum, chakum. Piece of cake, nobody could break it. And they smelled good.
But they took up like the whole back wall of the room, too.
Moving on to maintenance of plant?
I think so, do you have anything else on operation plant, Jim?
Okay. There is a request of five-point-eight million dollars, overall decrease of five-hundred-and-seventy-nine thousand, or nine-point-one percent. There is funding included for negotiations, however, there is a reduction in contracted painting and building repairs. Any questions?
Does no?
No questions.
Okay.
Fixed charges? There is a request of sixty-nine-point-eight million dollars, overall requested increase of five-point-two million, eight-point-one percent increase. And those increases are associated with negotiated agreements, specifically a social security pension increases, as well as a projected increase for health insurance of ten percent. We will not be getting care-first rates for next fiscal year until probably early March. As, and there are projected increases of twenty percent for the general liability and workers' compensation insurance increase. Any questions?
I don't want to pay this. No, it's not a, no.
Any questions, anyone have questions? Okay.
And the last funding category, capital outlay. There is a request of one-point-two million dollars. This is actually a significant decrease, a swell, of one-point-one million dollars, or forty-eight-point-three percent decrease. Funding is included for negotiations, however, the budget was reduced for one-time non-recurring costs that were funded in the FY twenty-four budget, specifically for security vestibules that were funded by the county commissioners, as well as the Brightly project management asset software. Any questions? So that concludes all of the categories within the unrestricted fund. Uh, we would be remiss if we didn't touch on the restricted fund positions and specifically, um, the reduction in the positions going into the next fiscal year's budget. As we've spoken at great length, we will not have the pandemic funding available to us in FY twenty-five, and there was a significant amount of academic support via teacher salaries, um, that were funded through some of the ESAR funds and Maryland leads over the past three years. And highlighted on the screen, you can see where there was an uptick when we started receiving the pandemic funding in twenty-twenty-one through twenty-twenty-four for the positions. Um, and in FY twenty-five, we're looking at one-hundred-and-forty-seven-point-two-three-five restricted funded positions, which is less than the level pre-pandemic of one-hundred-and-sixty-six positions.
And that is a function of the money going away. Not only the ESAR funds and lead funds, but other, other funding, uh, I mean, as, as well. We, and this is a, no matter what happens with the budget, again, no matter what happens with, so if the county commissioners, um, have a, a fantastic conversation and they really believe in the investment in education, which I, which I, which they do, and we find our way to get fourteen million dollars, an unparalleled, once-in-a-history of Saint Mary's County Public Schools infusion into our unrestricted fund, it still won't change the fact that the restricted funds and all the money that went in to help us recover from the, all of that money is gone. So we will be cutting those positions out of the restricted budget because there is no room for them in the unrestricted budget. So, uh, you know, this is a, we were, we were slated to have a synergy session with the, with ESMIC and ESMIC ESP on Tuesday. It, it didn't happen because of the inclement weather that came through. We are going to have a session, um, not this Tuesday, but the Tuesday after that, where we'll really be talking about that. But, recognize that whenever somebody is in a position that is fully funded by a grant, when the grant sunsets, the position goes away. And that's why every year, the commissioners, when we're talking about and, and accepting a grant and we put positions in it, Commissioner Wood always brings up, well, what happens at the end of the grant? You're putting a position in it, and the end of the grant, the position goes away, unless there is the capacity of the system to absorb the position. The work that these people have been doing, the two-hundred-and-thirty of them that are doing this year across all levels of the system, is incredible. The impact that they are having on, on students, on other professional staff, on supporting students and other professional staff, and getting work done across the system, is incredible. That being said, the money that pays their salary is going away, and there's nothing we can do about it. So, we are going to have to have, really, we are having very difficult decisions and conversations right now about making sure that we try to find a place for everybody in a, in a current vacancy or an anticipated vacancy. But, next year's budget, as proposed, only has a hundred-and-forty-seven positions in the restricted category, which is down, um, a hundred-and-thirty positions from where it was at its height last year, at two-hundred-and-seventy-four. So, um, these things, there's the budget and the money and all of this on one side, and the restricted's on the other side, and no matter what, there are going to be people that we need to find homes for, or they will not have a position come June thirtieth slash July one. We will make sure that we are communicating this upfront and everybody knows the process, but this is, this is on top of all the other things. And if everybody believes that it'll all work out, because it always all works out, and we always find a way to figure out how to do it, I'm here to tell you that is not the case for twenty-twenty-five. And we've been saying this consistently since twenty-twenty-one, when suddenly all this money started flowing in. We said, look, all of this money sunsets, all of this money goes away, all of it. In twenty-twenty-five, there's going to be an absolute reckoning. It's called a funding cliff. We get to there, no one's building a bridge, no one's taking a great leap. It's a funding cliff, there will be falling off, that is going to happen. At the same time, the state is giving us less money than the previous year projected, and that will be the first time we haven't had state increased funding since I've been superintendent. And that's because our enrollment is flat. Our farms population went down by one percent, and our county has great wealth, as evidenced by the front page of the County Times saying property is worth twenty-five percent more. And so, while we all respond to that in our own personal ways, the state says, you guys are doing great, you can pay for it. So, um, twenty-twenty-five is going to be the most challenging year we have faced economically since my first year as interim, where we started off the year with sixty, six-hundred thousand dollars in fund balance. Um, where we worried about meeting payroll. That's, that's the kind of budget year that, that we're going into. And we need to have everybody really part of that conversation because we are going to have to make decisions. Because we are going to decrease expenses, no matter what. And on the other side, if, if you can't decrease expenses enough, you have to increase revenue. And we have no, the school system has no way to increase revenue. We can't do a bake sale. We can't start selling our schools. We have nowhere to go for revenue, other than the federal government, flat, the state, decline. The only place that that leaves is for us to go over to our county commissioners and say, please, we have never needed you like we need you now, to help us get through a very difficult time. So, um, I look forward to a, I hope, I hope we have a lot of people that come out for the budget, uh, the public session next week. And I hope that everybody who has a question asks the question because we are eager, everybody in this room is eager to sit down and say, this is exactly the money we have, this is exactly how we are spending the money, and this is how we are benefiting kids, and this is exactly the reason why we need to be able to continue to do this important work. So, we have the public hearing coming up next week. We have a budget work session, which is during the day, not during the evening. Sorry, early, if anybody was paying attention, I said PM, it is an AM session.
On the twenty-fourth.
On the twenty-fourth. And then we have the thirty-first, where we have to approve and send it over to the county commissioners. Because if indeed we have a, if, if indeed what was proposed in December with the, from the county commissioners, and I know it's just the thing that they put forward, but if indeed they are to flat fund us, then this budget that we just presented you will have to be tossed out, and we'll have to come back, having stripped out everything to figure out how we get to a flat-funded budget for next year. And it won't just simply be, nobody gets a step or a raise or whatever gets negotiated July one. It's going to be, how do we cut six million dollars out of our recurring budget? And let me assure you, that's hundreds of teaching positions, hundreds of support positions, hundreds of positions across the entire system. Um, and that's, we haven't had, we haven't had to do that in over a decade. And it's, it's, it's brutal. It's brutal. As somebody who's seen the years where we had to give pink slips to all the paraeducators, that was brutal. Um, so, um, please, everybody, pay attention. Come out and talk to us about how much you value public education, because you know why your house is worth twenty-five percent more? Your house is worth twenty-five percent more because of the school system in Saint Mary's County. And if you have a failing school system, you don't have increasing property values. And so, yeah, come, come out and thank the school system for being a great school system, for your home being worth so much money, that's great. So ends my soapbox.
Okay, anyone else? All right. All right, that, we are done.